Okay, all right. So, good evening, everybody, and thank you for coming to episode six of the of the Columbus KTC's Transforming Emotions Book Club. And back six weeks ago when we started, I said that, I said, it might sound a little presumptuous, but I wanted to have this be the summer book club that changes your life. I know that sounds like, it sounds really corny, doesn't it? But I'm hoping that it has been useful for you. And I've actually heard from some of you that you feel as though the book club really has helped you. And I'm delighted to hear this. And I'm hopeful that when, as we wrap up this evening in Book Club and with the seventh of the seven points of mind training, that you'll see that there's actually even further you can go than where we are right, where you are today. So anyhow, just thanks again for your support and for putting up with all the crazy stuff that Eventbrite threw at us. And just, you know, I'm just incredibly grateful for your presence in Book Club this summer. I'm going to start by reciting, by reciting a prayer. And the prayer is in the Lojong practice. We're going to start with the Lojong practice. Have to make sure I have all the necessary items here. Here it is. It's the, it's the prayer at the beginning of the Lojong practice. And it's, it's on, it begins with the Refuge Prayer, which is on, I believe, the fourth page. Let's see, the fourth or the fifth. And I'll recite this prayer three times. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for the sake of all sentient beings. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for this benefit of all sentient beings. Until I reach enlightenment, I take refuge in all the Buddhas and in the Dharma and the Sangha. By the merit of accomplishing the six perfections, may I achieve Buddhahood for this sake and benefit of all sentient beings. Now, I'm going to read the Guru Yoga practice. At the beginning of every period of meditation, imagine your root guru sitting on a lotus and moon seat above your head. The guru's body is radiant and face happy and smiling as they regard all beings with non-referential compassion. In the guru, all the root and lineage gurus are present. With intense respect and devotion, repeat the following prayer. Now, I'm going to skip to the Guru Yoga prayer. It's a few pages later. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicita to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicita to arise in my mind. I pray for your blessing, my guru, great and completely worthy spiritual friend. I pray that you will cause love, compassion, and bodhicita to arise in my mind. Then, imagine that your guru descends through the aperture of Brahma at the top of your head and sits in your heart in a pavilion of light like an open shell. This exercise in intense respect and devotion is known as Guru Yoga. It is important to begin every period of meditation in this way. So we'll sit now quietly for just a moment and rest in the inseparability of our guru and ourselves. I'll recite a short prayer. Okay, thank you. So the last couple of weeks, we've started the session with questions, but I'd like to put questions a little farther back toward the end of the program today because there's quite a bit to go through this evening. So if you do have questions that develop, you can go ahead and type them into chat anytime. And I will pause a little later in the class and read them and then take some other questions. So if you have any questions to ask, you can go ahead and write them in chat. I guess you could say that this, this is the final of the six classes in the series on this book, The Great Path of Awakening by Jongkon Kontrol. We've been studying this book, which was written in the 19th century and translated in the 20th and 21st centuries. We've, we've been studying this book, which is a commentary on a 12th century text called The Seven Point Mind Training. That 12th century text, The Seven Point Mind Training, was written not long after the original teachings on mind training were given in Tibet by the great Indian master Atisha. And the 12th century text, The Seven Point Mind Training, was written by a great Tibetan master named Chikawa Yeshe Dorje and consists of 59 mind training slogans that teach us the mind training in seven points. And if you remember, every, every session, we've gone over the list of the seven points, and we'll do that again this evening. On page seven, the seven points are listed. Point one is the groundwork, instruction on what supports the Dharma. The second is the actual practice, training in bodhicita. Third is the transformation of adversity into the path of awakening. Fourth is the utilization of the practice in one's whole life. Fifth is the extent of proficiency in mind training. Sixth is the commitment of mind training. And seventh are the guidelines for mind training. And you can see how each of these leads to and builds upon the other. The groundwork is the foundation. The main practice of bodhicita meditation is next. Third is how to use the practice to work with adverse conditions that arise in life. The fourth is how to expand the practice to fill your whole life. The fifth is how you measure your success in the practice. The sixth are the behavioral guidelines, the behavioral commitments that you make as a Lojong practitioner. And the seventh is the guidelines for practice, the practice of Lojong. And remember, the word Lojong, L-O-J-O-N-G, Lojong means mind training. Lo means mind and Jong means training. So Lojong is mind training. And we train our mind as a way of changing our experience of ourselves and changing our experience of the world. And we change ourselves through training in these two skills of relative bodhicita and ultimate bodhicita. If you remember from the earliest part of our book, relative bodhicita is training the mind in love and compassion. And ultimate bodhicita is learning how to rest the mind evenly in its own pure nature. And if you remember from early in the book, Jongkon Kontrol said, "It's very difficult for beginners like us to experience true ultimate bodhicita, but the relative bodhicita of love and compassion will arise for us if we train in it. And with the development of love and compassion, ultimate bodhicita will be realized naturally." And so in the, in the section on the, the practice of relative bodhicita, we learn the basic practice of Tonglen, sending and receiving. On the out breath, we send goodness to all sentient beings. On the in breath, we remove the suffering from all sentient beings. And by doing this simple meditation, sending out love on the out breath and removing suffering on the in breath, by doing this over and over again, we train in the two basic skills. Love, by sending goodness on the out breath, and compassion, by removing suffering on the, I'm sorry, by sending love on the out breath and removing suffering on the in breath. We've trained in compassion. So in this way, we train on love on the out breath and compassion on the in breath. And by doing this over and over again for short periods of time every day, we can slowly and gradually begin to wear away our negative habits of self-fixation that have caused us so much trouble in our lives. And, and so if we look at the practice of mind training as a whole, the Buddha taught that we're all, we all have Buddha nature, but that it is hard to find our Buddha nature because of all of our layers of confusion and delusion. All, the point of all of Buddhist practice is to find ways to wear away and disperse and dispel our confusion and delusion. And we start by doing quiet sitting meditation, shamatha. And so by doing quiet sitting meditation, shamatha, we learn how to rest our attention on the breath as it comes in and goes out. And by doing this, shamatha reveals how our thoughts influence our experience of the world. So if shamatha reveals our thoughts, Lojong gives us methods to train our thoughts. I was talking, I've been talking to some Dharma friends in the last couple of days. And one of my Dharma friends said, "Ever since I started practicing quiet sitting meditation, I've noticed my thoughts more. It's almost like they got louder." And, and this is a very common side effect of doing shamatha practice is that you notice your thoughts more. And what's, there's good about that and not so good about that. The good about that is it gives you an opportunity to change them. The not so good about it is that you might feel a little bit of embarrassment about your mental state and you might have some negative thoughts that you want to move along. So I always tell people that if you notice that you're having negative thoughts, that's not necessarily a bad thing. It's a good thing to notice and it's a good thing to be able to counteract them with the, the teaching of Tonglen, sending and receiving. Because if you remember, the teaching of Tonglen is that when you feel something negative, you can immediately take hold of it and use it to create an aspiration for goodness. Do you remember the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan that we are taught? The, the three objects mean the things we like, the things we dislike, and the things that we're neutral toward. The three poisons are attachment, aversion, and ignorance. And the three seeds of virtue arise when we take hold of our negative mental affliction. Let's say that we're feeling attachment. We take hold of our attachment thought. We take one step outside of the story that that thought is telling us, like, "I must have this thing." We take one step back from that and say, "That is a thought of attachment." We're no longer inside that thought, believing it, the story that it's telling us. By taking one step outside that thought, we see it as a thought of attachment. And then we can use the formula that Jongkon Kontrol teaches in the book and say, "I am feeling attachment. May my attachment contain the attachment of all sentient beings. And by my working through this moment of attachment, may I and all beings be free of attachment and may we become Buddhas," which is the complete freedom from attachment. And being able to be consciously aware of our thoughts is the beginning of this transformation, this change. And if you remember from class number one, the, the title of this book, when it is translated into French, is, I'm going to mangle the French, but it's La Chami du Souffrance, so The Alchemy of Suffering. And so in any case, we can actually learn how to transform our afflictions and use them as aspirations to Buddhahood. Now, now this brings us to today's class. That was just a little bit of background that brings us to today's class. Today's class will be on the seventh of the seven points of mind training. And, and we start on page 44. At least, I think I've got that right. No, we don't start on page 44. Never mind, my mistake. We start on, well, actually, yeah, let's go to page 44. It's the last page in this section. On page 44, there are, at the bottom of the page, count up from the bottom, one, two, three. The third paragraph from the bottom says, "All of these points of advice are means that will strengthen mind training and prevent it from weakening." And so this is the point of the seventh point. He puts the whole summary at the very end rather than at the beginning of this section. So if the purpose of the 16 slogans in point six, the commitments of mind training, were to tell us how Bodhisattva in training should behave, point number seven, the point of point seven, and the 21 slogans of point seven is "Means, methods that will strengthen your mind training and prevent your mind training from weakening." Many people say to me, "I was really good at meditating before. And when I was meditating before, life seemed easier. But now that I don't meditate so much, life is not as easy as it used to be." And what this means is that over time, our mindfulness has weakened just a little bit. And because our mindfulness has weakened a little bit, we're not as able to deal with the things that arise for us. And so Lojong also can weaken if we don't practice. And so these slogans, the 21 slogans of point seven, are aimed at trying to help us prevent our practice from weakening. So now we'll go to the beginning of this section. The, the section of seven, the seventh point begins on page 37. So you might say that this is the most challenging of the seven points of mind training because there are so many slogans in it. Some points have only one slogan. This one has 21. However, the author of the text gives us a sneaky way to remember them. Okay, I don't know if this is like bogus trivia, but after teaching this book for 15 years, I noticed something. And that is that the first two slogans in this section use in the slogan, the number one. The next three slogans use the number two. And the next four slogans use the number three. So that is a sneaky way that the author put into the text to help him remember. The first, let's see, that's two, five, nine, right? The first nine slogans are easier to remember now. Not that I've ever memorized them. Anyhow, but I just thought I would show you that sneaky thing. I love trivia. I'm going to work through these rather quickly so that we have plenty of time for questions at the end. So the first two slogans with the number one. The first of these slogans is, on page 37, "Use one practice for everything." And then the second slogan is, "Use one remedy for everything." The, the one practice, "Use one practice for everything." The commentary by Jongkon Kontrol says, "Continue practice into everyday life with a single meditation, always keeping in mind the intention to help others in all activities, eating, dressing, sleeping, walking, or sitting. If ever you don't know what to do, if ever you say to yourself, 'How do I practice love and compassion in this moment?'" Maybe you get confused and you can't remember any of your slogans. If you remember nothing else, you can remember one thing, and that one thing is, "May I be of benefit to others." And that's, you know, that's a phrase that I like to use a lot. I like to say, "May all beings benefit." I like to say that. And a lot of people can think, "May all beings benefit." So you can, if you can think of that phrase, you're practicing mind training. "May all beings benefit." Sometimes I go into a situation where I don't know what's going to happen, like I'm meeting new people, or it's going to be stressful or something. And I'll think before I go in, "Whatever happens, even if I make a complete and utter fool of myself, may that be of benefit to beings." So that's something to think about. So since all of the compassion practice is about benefiting others, thinking of their benefit is the one practice we can do. And the one remedy, he says, "Analysis itself is used to correct mistakes in analysis." That sounds like a confusing double talk. But what he's getting at here, he says, "Use, use, think, use your noggin," is basically what he's saying. "Use your head. If things go wrong, don't blame somebody." Rather, he said, "Think. In the whole universe, there are many sentient beings who have problems like mine. My compassion goes out to all of them. And in addition to this unwanted situation, may all the unwanted circumstances and suffering of all sentient beings be collected here and use the single corrective of exchanging yourself for others." So he's now boiled down the entire seven points of mind training to two phrases. One is, "May all beings benefit. May I benefit beings?" And the second phrase is, "May I exchange myself for others? May I take on the sufferings of others?" And so that's it. The, the, the one practice to do is wishing for the benefit of others. The one corrective is, "May I take on the sufferings of others?" So hopefully that helps a little bit in boiling down the entire seven point mind training to two phrases. Now, we'll get into the three slogans that use the number two. They are, "Two things to do, one at the beginning, one at the end." The next one is, "Whatever happens, good or bad, be patient." And the third one is, "Keep these two even if your life is at risk." Now, you might say, "Wait a minute. The number two is not in that second slogan." Actually, it is. It's in the Tibetan. But the translator decided to change the, the, the translation of the slogan, and the number two was removed. So it's, it's in there. So here we go. Two things to do, one at the beginning and one at the end. It's talking about your day. When you get up in the morning, say, "May I benefit beings today?" When you go to sleep at night, say, "Think about your day and rejoice in all the good you did and regret all the negative things you did." And then go to sleep thinking, "I'm going to go benefit beings wherever I go in my dreams." So he's saying, "Two things to do, one at the beginning and one at the end." So he's saying to dedicate your whole day to bodhicita. Then, the second slogan, "Whatever happens, good or bad." And the original slogan translation was, "Whichever of two occurs, be patient." Be patient. In other words, take a breath and mindfully address whatever is in front of you. If good things happen, take a mindful breath and wish and, wish that all beings benefit from the good thing that has happened. If something bad happens, take a breath and be patient, and then take on the sufferings of others. Then, he says, whichever, and he says, "Keep these two even if your life is at risk." I'll read this one. He says, "Since all present and future happiness comes from carefully observing the general precepts of Dharma contained in the three ordinations." Now, the three ordinations, he explained a few sessions ago when he was saying that the three ordinations are your Hinayana, Refuge vow, and lay precepts. That's the first level of ordination. Second level of ordination is the Bodhisattva vow. Third level is your Vajrayana empowerment. So keep all of your precepts and the particular precepts of mind training and their corresponding commitments, which we talked about last time. Observe these sets of precepts even at the risk of your life. Moreover, whatever you do, observe them not from a concern and consideration for your own welfare, but only with the intention of being helpful to others. So keep the two sets of ordinations, your, your, you know, your three ordinations and then your mind training commitments. Keep those two commitments. All your ordinations and your mind training commitments. And now it's, he says, "Even at the risk of your life." Now, I know that there's very few among us who would actually be able to, to do that, to risk our life in order to keep the precepts of Dharma. I think many of us think that if we were confronted with that choice of rejecting Dharma and dying, we would probably reject Dharma. And because we're not enlightened Bodhisattvas yet, this is a very difficult thing to think about. But as Sitaram Bhasa said, "When you are making aspirations for your future," he said, "Don't worry about practicality. Aim high. So we will make the aspiration that we will have that, the strength of our convictions. If not now, at the future of our life." Now, that's the three slogans that use the number two. Now, the four slogans that use the number three. Learn to meet three challenges. Foster three key elements. Take care to prevent three kinds of damage. Engage all three faculties. So learn to meet three challenges. Those of you who have read Pema Chodron's books on Lojong, you'll recognize this one. The earlier translation of this slogan was, "Learn to do the three difficult things." And, and so the first challenge is to recognize your disturbing emotions, to recognize them as being mental afflictions, not to jump inside them and believe the stories that they're telling you, but rather to see your mental affliction as mental affliction. Second, the second of the challenges is to overcome them by using sending and receiving or using exchanging oneself for others, taking on the negativity of all beings and so on. That's the second challenge. The third challenge is to cut their continuity. Pema Chodron puts it this way. See what you do, do something different, and make that the way you live your life. In other words, those are the three difficult things. See your habitual reactions as being problematic. Change how you react and then make the dedication to changing those reactions be that, may that be the way you live your life. So Jongkon Kontrol says, "Therefore, you should train to meet these three challenges. First, recognize disturbing emotions for what they are as soon as they arise. For what they are as soon as they arise." So let's say you have this feeling of instant reactive anger about something that's happened. You might not be able to catch that moment of reactive anger, the moment it arises. But you might But you might catch it a few seconds later, a few minutes later, grab it as soon as you can. Then stop the reaction by taking corrective measures such as the three object slogan. My, may my anger contain the anger of all beings and may my going through this anger. Uh, may, and by going through this anger, may I and all sentient beings be free of it and may we become Buddhists. And then he says, finally be decisive in your attitude that such disturbances will never arise again. So this is, um, these are the three challenges we have to meet in order to expand our Lojong practice. Then he says, foster three key elements. The primary elements for working at Dharma are a good guru, the proper practice of Dharma with a workable mind and suitable conditions for Dharma practice, food, clothing, and so on. So the first thing to have is that you, is really important to have is a good teacher. Second, you have to have a good practice of Dharma with a workable mind. Now, the reason workable mind is mentioned is because sometimes even though we have a good teacher, we may not be willing to follow the teacher's advice and may think we, we might actually know better than the teacher. And so our mind in that case is not workable in that our arrogance and pride are getting in the way of our being able to follow the teacher's instructions. So he says, good guru, proper practice of Dharma with a workable mind, and then all of the external resources that we need to practice Dharma. Food, clothing, shelter, and so on. And he says, if you have these, rejoice and put them to use. And if you don't have them, take on the negative aspects of that, saying, you know, may I take on the lack, uh, that all beings have in these resources? And pray that we eventually get them. The three kinds of damage that they're warning us against, don't let faith and respect for your guru be damaged since all of the fine qualities of the Dharma depend on your guru. Second, enthusiasm for the meditation on mind training must not be damaged since mind training is the very core of Mahayana Buddhism. Because you know, what could happen is we might start, uh, thinking about all of our teachers faults because as Trungpa Rinpoche once said, all teachers are a mixture of qualities and faults. And our job as students is to find teachers who have relatively more qualities than faults and then to train in the teacher's qualities and not train in the teacher's faults. And this was so helpful for me to hear because since I'm not an enlightened being and I still be, I still become impatient, I still lose my temper, I still have problems, I worry sometimes. And Kemper Rinpoche, uh, encouraged me to always do confession prayers at night so that I can confess any faults that I've committed during the day and purify them through the confession practice. But I still don't like losing my patience and I still don't like that. But hearing Trungpa Rinpoche say that all teachers are a mixture of qualities and faults made me feel a little better. You know, so I was in good company. But as students, we have to do our best. As teachers, we have to do our best not to exercise our faults, but rather to try to dispel our faults. And not to, and not to, um, refrain from doing good, but do good as much as possible. So since, uh, all teachers are a mixture of qualities and faults, it's up to us as students to find teachers who have relatively more qualities than faults and to practice the qualities and not practice the faults. So that's the first. Second, enthusiasm on mind training must not diminish. This means that if you see, if you're doing mind training really diligently and then you hear about another practice that you think might actually be more fun uh, than having to take on the sufferings of other beings and stuff like that, you might say, oh, I guess I don't have to do that Lojong thing anymore. That's kind of like, that's kind of like low grade practice. I want to do this big thing that I just heard about. So he's saying, please don't abandon Lojong. And then, uh, finally, uh, observation of the precepts of the three ordinances must not be damaged either. So he's hit on the subject of the three ordinances uh, multiple times, at least three in the whole book. And so this means that he really wants people to remember their refuge vow and keep it. Remember their lay precepts, whichever ones they've taken and keep them. Remember their Bodhisattva vow and keep it. And remember their, uh, Vajrayana Samaya and keep it. He just wants those to be the foundation upon which other things are built. Then the last of these slogans is engage all three faculties. He said, make the three faculties, your body, your speech and your mind, always inseparable from virtuous actions and refrain from evil. So now I'm going to, now that I've gotten through almost half of the 21 slogans, I'm going to stop and see if anybody has questions. We, I raced through that pretty fast, but I thought, you know, it'd be good to get a few of those done before stopping and taking questions. Let's see what. Okay. Oh, that's right. Yes. Um, someone's reminding me something that I meant to send them and I did forget to do that. I'm sorry. Uh, does anybody have any questions? If so, uh, put them into chat and, uh, and if you, um, if you don't have, if you don't want to chat, uh, you, if you don't want to use chat, you can, uh, unmute your microphone and, um, and, um, ask a question.
Lama Kathy, I was wondering if over time, what would you recommend when we're done with this course? Will you be able to cover tonight, how to move forward and embrace all these amazing slogans? Yeah. Just want to make sure we have that. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I'm going to talk about that at the end. And here's another question. Uh, regarding the point about not pointing blame, it is hard at times not to do so even with politicians, people in power and so on. Well, yeah. I mean, we don't check our common sense at the door and, uh, blindly follow people who are leading us in the wrong direction. Uh, so I think, um, Kemper Rinpoche once said, look, once you realize that someone is a liar, you will never trust them again. And so that, what that said to me was that as Buddhists, we recognize wrong when we see it. And when necessary, we speak out. But we should not sit and encourage other people to hate someone. And we shouldn't fixate on the wrong that other people do and ignore the fact that those people are suffering beings. So I hope this helps. Of course, when we are parents and our children disobey us, we have to give that child correction. We can't just let them do wrong over and over again. And so there are ways of, um, of dispatching negative politicians and that's what we do when we vote. So the idea is that we have to take what actions we can. But if we only sit and think about the faults of other people, always, ever, their fault, they're bad, they're bad, they're bad, they're bad, then stuff like that's going to come out of our mouth. And stuff like that's going to come out of our actions and we're going to actually become really negative people. So I don't know if this is helpful at all, but maybe that didn't answer the question, but in case it did, any other questions? Okay. Um, okay, there being no other question. Oh, wait a minute. I have so much practice to do in these lessons and turn off the news. Well, yeah, here's the thing. We have to, we have to be able to pursue a middle path. As human beings, we tend to be really good at extremes. All or nothing. We, we, we fall into a lot of all or nothing behavior and all or nothing thinking. But the Buddha taught the middle path away from the extremes. And so that's what we have to try to practice. We have to recognize what is wrong and be able to address what's wrong without hating somebody. Because the hatred doesn't actually hurt the other person. The hatred impacts us. As, um, as one person once, uh, the Dalai Lama once said, anger only destroys its container. And so if we can do our best to reject anger and instead pray for those who cause trouble, that's a good one. Many of you will remember that, um, Kemper Karthar Rinpoche spoke a prayer in response to someone who asked, how do we pray for politicians that we hate? And, uh, I, I've said this, I thought for sure I'd shared this prayer before, but in case I didn't, I will read it now and, uh, I will, uh, try to uh, share it with people, uh, in some way, uh, at the end of the class. This is called the aspiration prayer for those who do harm in the public sphere. By the truth of the realization and wisdom of all Buddhists and Bodhisattvas in countless realms throughout the ten directions, may this person gradually transcend their current limitations, meet spiritual friends, enter the path and gain liberation. Wow, right? May this person gradually transcend their current limitations, meet spiritual friends, enter the path and gain liberation. When I was teaching on this prayer at some point in the past, um, I, um, I said, you know, worldly people who are materialists, you know, who are all or nothing thinkers, you know? Materialists and, uh, ordinary people say, um, when they are angry at someone, they say, go to hell. But Buddhists, when we're upset, we say, may you get enlightened. It's a whole different outlook on the whole thing. Okay. So it looks like that's all the questions for now. Um, so, okay. All right. So, uh, so we'll go on in the book then. Uh, yeah, it, it, it's not necessarily that you have to turn off the news, but you might, uh, do your mala and do ma- and do mantras while you're watching the news. And that way you can pray for everybody in the news. You know, that, I, I, that might be a good use of time. I'm just saying. And maybe watch a little less. I may have shared, shared the story before that, um, one of Kemper Rinpoche's, uh, students was addicted to 24 hour news. And they got angrier and angrier and angrier when they would see the politicians they hated on TV. And Kemper Rinpoche actually somehow got a sense of this based on the things they, they were asking and said, you know, I think you should stop watching that. You should just stop completely. Uh, and just quit because it's hurting your mind. And the person couldn't do it. They, they couldn't do it. They felt they were being untrue to the, um, to their struggle against bad government. So, there are all kinds of things that can get in the way of our practice. So now we'll go through the second half of the seventh point. Train on every object. This is on page 40, middle of the page. Train on every object without preference. Training must be broad and deep. Uh, and so he's saying, without partiality, train, mind training by itself should pervade everything, good or bad, which arises as an object of your experience. Other sentient beings, the four elements, or non-human beings. Deeply trained proficiency, not just lip service is important. So in other words, you, if you have something that knocks you over and you can't practice with it, make a determination that you will eventually get that one and be able to practice even with this bad thing that usually knocks you over. So don't just give in to the thing that knocks you over. Say, I'll get you next time. And then practice the three objects, three poison slogan with that. The next one is, um, always work on what makes you boil. Meditate skillfully by bringing out extra love and compassion for subjects that present difficulties in mind training. Oh, we were just talking about that. Aggressive enemies, troublesome obstacles, particularly those who act perversely or respond to your help by making trouble. People who compete with you, casual friends, people who are troublesome, even though there is no bad feeling, or those with whom you just don't get along. In particular, avoid anything that will cause trouble with the people to whom you have a close relationship, your guru or your parents. For example, and it's basically saying that because our parents and our guru are the people who are, actually it's parents, children and guru who are the closest karmically to us in this lifetime. We have to try our best to do our best by them. Then the next slogan says, don't depend on extraneous circumstances. In other words, some people practice when things are going really well, but then when things go badly, they stop practicing. Or it's the other way around. When things are bad, they practice really well, but when things are going good, they just, they just give up and stop practicing. He's saying, don't have any concern for what's going on outside. Practice inwardly always. Then he says, practice what's important now. Um, this is, this one, he's, he's going to get a little sharp with us. Um, Jangkhen Khatral the Great is sort of well known as a, a person who didn't, um, mince words. So he's going to not mince them here. From time without beginning, you, student, have taken existence in innumerable forms in, uh, in all of which nothing meaningful has been done. What? But so what he's getting at here, he said, you've been, he's basically saying, you've been a sentient being in samsara for lifetime after lifetime. But you didn't get enlightened yet. That's what he means by nothing meaningful has been done, meaning you didn't transcend samsara and become a Buddha. So even Kemper Karthar Rinpoche has said that on occasion. He said, we've been alive, how many, many, many billions of lifetimes and we didn't get it? We didn't get enlightenment yet. So then he's saying, a similar coincidence of conducive conditions in this life will not come about in the future. Now, um, it maybe, maybe he's right. Maybe it's never, we're never going to have it this good again. So I guess it's time to do it now. Now that you have obtained a precious human existence and met the pure Dharma, you should put the main points into practice in order to realize objectives of permanent significance. Objectives of permanent significance equals enlightenment. So now he's going to actually give one of the hidden gems in this book. People come to me often and they say, how do I make decisions? Do I do this or do I do that? What's the best thing for me to do in this situation? Now, I'm not an enlightened being, so I can't tell them. But in the next few sentences, Jangkhen Khatral actually gives a framework for making decisions. And so just make note of these because it is, it's one of the hidden gems in this book. He says, so aims for future lives are more important than aims for this life. So for example, if you have the opportunity to, uh, to do a retreat which is going to help you in your future life, or if you have the opportunity to, um, go on a wild casino vacation, you've got a pretty good decision of which one you might pick. Just saying, just saying. I mean, you know, parents, you have done everything you could possibly do for your children. You help put them through school, you do all this kind of stuff, and yet you don't care, take care of the child you're going to be in your future life. I'm just saying, if we really cared as much about the child we are going to be in somebody's future life, if we cared as much about that as we did about our own, our own children in this life, we would do a lot more for our future life to ensure that we do a lot of virtue now so that we have a much better lifetime if we get born again into this world. I mean, if we don't somehow get to Daywatchen, the pure realm. Anyhow, that's enough about that. So the first of these is future, aims for future life are more important than aims for this life. For the future, freedom is more important than samsara. So anything that helps make So anything that helps make you free is better. Anything that keeps you bound is not so good. The welfare of others is more important than your own. Of practicing and teaching the Dharma, practicing is more important. I like to stop and just savor that one. Training in bodhicitta is more important than other practices. Because remember, at the very beginning, he said, without bodhicitta as your motivation, it doesn't matter what practice you do, you're not going to accomplish anything because you're not doing it for the right reason. Further, intensive meditation on your guru's instruction is more important than analytical meditation based on texts. So if your, if your guru points out the nature of your mind, it's better to meditate on what your guru has taught you about the, about your mind rather than trying to do analytical meditation based on a text that you read that you don't have a transmission for. And then finally, he says, and then sitting on your mat and training is uh, is more important than other forms of activity. So there you have it. The, the hierarchy of decision-making by Jangkhen Khatral the Great. So anyway, there you have it. So then it just keeps, he keeps going. Now he gives you a bunch of do's and don'ts. The next slogans are like a whole bunch of do's and don'ts. Don't get things wrong. Don't switch on and off. Train wholeheartedly. Find freedom through probing and testing. Don't boast. Don't be higher, hypersensitive. Don't be impulsive. Don't expect thanks. So this last set, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, these last eight are the do's and don'ts. Like I said last time, it's almost like Jangkhen Khatral was an enlightened being or something, you know, because he knows our human failings. He knows how human we really are and all the little things that we goof up on as human beings. He knows each and everyone and he's not scared to list them for our own benefit. So now, this is really great. Another one of the hidden gems in this book is in the, is in, under the slogan, don't get things wrong. You know, we tend to blame ourselves for stuff and then we also like blame other people for stuff. But now he's gonna tell us what's really wrong. You know, you wanna know what's really wrong? These are what's wrong. He says, avoid six mistakes. To endure patiently the suffering of subduing enemies, protecting friends and working to make money and not to patiently endure the difficulties of Dharma practice is mistaken practice. Yikes. To want wealth, happiness and comfort in this life and to have no inclination to practice Dharma thoroughly is mistaken inclination. To enjoy the taste of wealth and possessions and not to enjoy the taste of hearing, reflecting and meditating on the Dharma is mistaken enjoyment. To have compassion for a person who puts up with hardship in order to practice Dharma and not to have compassion for those who do evil is mistaken compassion. I'll come back to this in a minute. To engage people who look to you in bettering only their position in this life and not to engage them in Dharma is mistaken care. Um, I was told by um, one of the translators that this one refers to your employees, people who work for you. Uh, they look to you in bettering their position in life. In other words, they look to you for the funds, the money that you give them. So if you pay people without also engaging them in virtue, that's, that's mistaken care. To take joy in other people's unhappiness and the suffering of your enemy and not to take joy in virtue and happiness and nirvana or samsara is mistaken joy. Avoid these six mistakes completely. The one I wanna uh, make a note of, to have compassion for a person who puts up with hardship in order to practice Dharma and not have compassion for those who do evil is mistaken compassion. So a lot of people say, those people are evildoers. I will not have compassion for them. And he's saying, that's wrong. It's wrong not to have compassion for evildoers because if you think about their future lifetime, and this is something that Khenpo Kartharimbaché would say, if you don't think about the future of evildoers and see the suffering that they're going to endure because of their evil doing and then feel compassion for them and not hate them. He said, then you're making a mistake. And then he said, you know what really is wrong, Rinpoche said? It's when you, you hear about people who go to three year, go on three year retreat to practice Dharma and you think, oh, those poor people, they don't get to be with their families. They have to like practice all day. It's, oh, those poor people. You know, he said, don't feel sorry for them. They're probably gonna get to enlightenment quicker than maybe, he didn't say than you, but you know. So now he's telling you what real mistakes are. Hang on just a second. Uh, allergy season. Don't switch on and off. Now here's another one that's hard to hear. A person who sometimes practices and sometimes doesn't uh, has not developed a definite understanding of Dharma. Don't have a lot of projects on your mind, but do mind training single-mindedly. Khenpo Kartharimbaché used to describe me to other people who were Tibetans as, she has a lot of ideas. She has a lot of ideas. And that's code word for, I don't know where she's coming from sometimes. And she likes, she's busy, her head's busy all the time. I don't know if she's practicing, but she thinks a lot. I mean, it's a really kind and compassionate way of saying, I don't know about this one. Anyhow, um, so that's something to think about. So in order to understand the, um, and other, in order to really understand and get on your cushion, the four thoughts that turn the mind toward Dharma are important. And reflecting upon the four thoughts that turn the mind toward Dharma is very important. And if you want a review of the four thoughts, they're on page nine of this book. So if you go back to page nine, you'll see something labeled groundwork instructions. So if you wanna know, um, the answer to this question, this definite understanding of the Dharma that he's talking about, if you can understand the preciousness of your human life, the fact of impermanence, the truth of karma and understand the defects of worldly objectives, of seeking only worldly objectives. Then he said, you will know what Dharma is really for and what it's about and you'll practice well. The next slogan, train wholeheartedly. Uh, saying, you know, don't run around and follow distractions. Uh, for most of us these days, it's these, it's these really questionable devices, uh, the cell phone. Um, I have, I have been trying to give myself vacations from my cell phone every day, a certain amount of time when I do not look at it and I put it away. Uh, because we, it's, it, it, it encourages people to be distracted. It encourages distraction. Um, and it's really hard on your attention span. The next slogan, find freedom by probing and testing. He's basically, what he's saying here is, if we think that we are becoming relatively free from samsaric clinging, we need to test and see how good our freedom from clinging really is. He said, so, sit, uh, sit and think about something that usually incites your attachment, something that you like, that you feel attached to. And then see if attachment arises or not. And if attachment doesn't arise, then feel happy and rejoice in that. And um, make the aspiration that you're always that way. But then if you find that you don't have anything that incites attachment, then think about something that incites aversion. And then see if uh, aversion arises or not. And if aversion does arise, vigorously use your three objects, three poison, I mean, three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan to counteract those negativity. And so again, he says, just keep testing yourself in meditation. It's easier to test yourself in meditation than it is to test yourself out in the street by meaning out on the sidewalk when you meet people and have problems with them and so on. So it's better to practice on your cushion and understand that. Then he says, don't boast. In other words, don't make a big deal of the fact that you are uh, practicing Dharma. He said, don't trade boasts with other people. It's, it's, it's unseemly because he says basically, look, all the stuff you're doing to take good care of yourself, it's benefiting you. But so you don't have to like boast about it to other people. And then at the very end of this section, he, he quotes a monastic manual called the Councils of Ratchang Monastery. They have, they have a guidebook for monastics and it says, don't expect much of people, pray to your yedam. A yedam is a patron Buddha or a patron Bodhisattva, like some people have patron saints in the Christian tradition. Um, so when you are feeling like other people are disappointing you and you're feeling bad, don't think about them and stew about how they disappoint you. Instead, pray to um, to your patron Buddha and Bodhisattva instead. Then he says, uh, don't be hypersensitive. This is something that I fall into all the time. I'm, I, my feelings can be hurt really easily. I'm kind of a sensitive person that way. And, but I have to recognize that and find ways to, when I feel hurt, instead of getting angry, to take a breath and and take a breath and try to be at peace in my mind before I open my mouth and react and say something. So he's saying, please, uh, take a breath and don't try not to be as reactive. And then he says, um, and then here's another one that I, I really struggle with. He says, uh, don't be impulsive. And I just love this phrase and I, I, let's see if I have it committed to memory now. Don't trouble the minds of your companions by showing your pleasure or displeasure on every little matter. Like wow, or ooh, you know. I guess I have some work to do in that regard. Um, and then the last one is, don't expect thanks. He says, the, don't hope that other people will express their gratitude in words of thanks for your practice of the Dharma, your helping others or your practicing a virtue. In a word, get rid of any expectation of fame and prestige. I mean, he's essentially saying, we have to get over ourselves. And then he says, all of these uh, points of advice, and again, we read this sentence at the beginning of this point. This is page forty-four. All these points of advice are means that will strengthen mind training and prevent it from weakening. In summary, Gyalte Rinpoche, Gyalte Togme, who wrote the Thirty Seven Actions of a Bodhisattva, has said, throughout our lives, we should train well in the two kinds of bodhicitta, using both meditation and post-meditation practices and acquire the confidence of proficiency. And then he says, make an effort to follow this instruction. And then uh, he, he reads the Kalafon, uh, which is the author's completion. As the five kinds of decay spread, this practice changes these five kinds of decay into the path of awakening. This instruction, the essence of an elixir, is a transmission from Serlengpa. So he's talking about the, the fact that these fifty-nine mind training slogans were not his own invention necessarily, but come uh, as an essence, as the, you know, sort of the um, the way that medicines, herbal medicines are made from the essences of plants, the vital essences of plants. In that same way, these fifty-nine slogans are the vital essence of the teachings on mind training that the great master Serlengpa of Sumatra gave to Atisha of India. And that Atisha took back with him to India and then to Tibet. And then he's talking about the five kinds of decay. It's said in the texts, in the Buddhist texts that as uh, as we get farther and farther into this era, the times are decaying, sentient beings are deteriorating, lifespan is deteriorating, emotions are getting more coarse and our outlook is they're all steadily advancing into negativity. Happy situations are conducive to Dharma are few and disruptive and adverse conditions proliferate. I mean, here we are in the midst of that situation right now. Pandemic and uh, and storms, wildfires, angry people in the streets, not just the ones that want justice, but the ones that want to enact injustice. We have all kinds of difficulties right now. And then Jangkhen Khatral writes, while the remedies and other teachings may not be effective on these five things, for someone who uses mind training, virtuous activity increases directly with the prep, the proliferation of adverse conditions. Just as the flames of a fire become stronger and stronger, the more and more wood is piled on. This teaching has a special feature others lack. It changes all disturbing emotions and adverse conditions into the way or the path of awakening. These instructions are like the essence of an elixir and will enrich the course of experience and be helpful to everyone, whatever his or her capabilities. They are profound teachings transmitted from Lord Serlengpa, the very kindness, kindest of of uh, Lord Atisha's three principal gurus. So, um, uh, earlier someone asked if I could give um, a comment about how this practice can be used in every facet of your life. And this is, this paragraph is it. If we think about it, the times we're living in are difficult. But if we can use these principles, the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue and those two important things of wishing for the benefit of beings and taking on the sufferings of others. If we can do these things, then no matter how many bad things happen, we will be able to practice Dharma more and more and more if we take to heart these teachings and use them when bad conditions proliferate. This is why at the beginning of point three, I uh, recited the verse from Khenpo Soltrum Jamso, who made the aspiration, may all our bad conditions become friends, arise as friends along the path. May bad circumstances actually bring us benefit. May we realize emptiness, the complete freedom from elaborations and coming to a realization of these, may we benefit all sentient beings. So that, making that aspiration, we can take everything to the path. And the final part of the Kalafon on page forty-five at the bottom of the page, he says, the, the awakening of karmic energy of previous training aroused intense interest in me. Therefore, I ignored suffering and criticism and sought instruction for subduing ego clinging. Now, when I die, I'll have no regrets. And um, and so Chikawa Yeshe Dorje is talking about, he went through hardship and endured criticism to uh, receive and practice these teachings. But now that he has practiced them and internalized their meaning, he has, he is essentially saying, my life now has meaning because I have achieved the aim of a precious human life and that he's attained uh, realization through this practice. And then, um, after that are uh, sections of the book entitled Additional uh, Instructions from the Transmission Lineage. And um, I did announce in email today uh, that there will be two additional uh, meetings of this group uh, that are optional. And um, they will be the next two Wednesdays, September the second and the September ninth. They will be recorded. There will be no sign up. There's no need to register. If you received an email from me today uh, to remind you of this evening's class, you will receive a reminder and the Zoom instructions for these two additional sessions. There's no need, you've already donated and everything else. So these are just additional sessions. I will review these additional instructions in brief, not in length, but in brief. And then spend the majority of both of those additional sections answering questions. Uh, so um, if you have additional questions that arise as you practice these slogans, you can write them all down, send them by email or uh, bring them uh, to uh, our session, our next two sessions and now I'll answer them. And just as I have with these classes, I will record them. And I will put them on my YouTube page so that you can download them. And I mean, not download, you can stream them and watch them even if you can't be here. So um, let's see if there are any, uh, we have, uh, we're doing really well on time. We're doing well on time. We have We're doing well on time. We have 10 minutes. I was hoping, I'm sorry, I had to hop, skip, and jump through those 21 slogans, but at least this gives you an idea of their meaning. And let's see what kind of questions you have. And then at the very end, I'll talk to you about your further practice. There are two questions in chat right now. "Is a yidam something a teacher guides or instructs you to follow? Or is a yidam one you feel innately close to?" I think it's a combination of these two. If you're familiar with how Khenpo Karthar Rinpoche guided students, the way he guided students was he started everyone with shamatha practice. And as they continued and developed in their shamatha practice, he would teach them tong len and mind-training. And then, when people became ready to enter the path of Mahamudra, which is the meditation by which all of the masters of the Kaju lineage have attained awakening, when people are ready to enter the Mahamudra path, he would teach them nundro. And then when they finished their nundro, he would teach them a yidam practice. For the 16th karmapa, encouraged Rinpoche to give as a yidam practice, the practice of the second karmapa, karmapakshi, as a union of the three roots, the Lama, the yidam, and the protector as one. And also that students could, and as they do their karmapakshi practice, could receive Mahamudra instruction from any one of several Lamas that he would send his students to attend their Mahamudra programs. And so a yidam practice is something that we can take for ourselves right now. We could say, "Okay, my yidam right now is Chenrezig," or "My yidam right now is Tara." We can take one that we feel close to as our yidam right now. But the real application of yidam practice will come after the finishing of the nundro practice. So I hope that answers the question. It's a combination. Sometimes the teacher will give you one and sometimes you will go to the teacher and say, "May I have this one? I have one example from my own friends. One of my friends felt really close to Chenrezig practice. And so when he finished his nundro, he went to Khenpo Rinpoche and said, 'May I do Chenrezig as my yidam practice?'" And Rinpoche said, "No, I want you to do karmapakshi practice instead." And that was sort of a fork in the road for this gentleman. And he wavered. And he said, "Okay, I'll do karmapakshi practice." And then he carefully learned it, carefully practiced it. And then after a year or two or three, I don't remember, Rinpoche called him in front of him and said, "Now you may do Chenrezig for the rest of your life." So it was one of those things where Rinpoche felt that this person needed the removal of obstacles that's part of the karmapakshi practice. And then he gave him the Chenrezig yidam practice. "What is an effective approach to pray to yidam?" That's a very, actually, that's quite a complicated question. I think one of the things you can think about is think about how you apply yourself to Lojong. How we apply ourselves to Lojong practices, no matter what happens, we think, "How may I benefit others through this?" Or, "How may I take on the sufferings of others through this?" And in a way, our constant thinking about, "How do I benefit beings?" And our constant thinking about, "How do I subdue my mental afflictions?" That, in the way, is the same kind of practice as a yidam practice, where you're always thinking about it, always practicing it. And I can talk more about that in a future class. I like to do a lot of reading on any subject that I'm interested in learning about, and it sometimes leads to confusion. You mentioned the trouble of trying to follow texts that we have not received transmission on. "How should we approach our extracurricular teaching to avoid confusion?" Khenpo Rinpoche used to say that people could read widely. But if they begin, if their reading leads them to wish to abandon their practice and take on something new, there's a problem. And so if we could recognize our own compulsive attachment for the shiny and new, the minute we recognize that compulsive attachment for the shiny and new and our wish to not do what we're doing right now, that's an indication, that's the indication that we have to stop and really back up and rethink where we're heading. And this is also the value of having a teacher. I have to say that I've met a lot of people who like to discuss Dharma on chat boards and things like this. And they are always trading intellectual information and book titles. And they're always kind of like encouraging each other to study more and study more and study more. And sometimes it's kind of like that situation that arose for Marpa, the translator, where actually he had a companion who would go with him to India. And Marpa would get a certain number of texts and this companion would get a certain number of texts. And Marpa was always covetous and jealous of the other person and was competing with him. And this competition was not healthy, and yet it made Marpa get more and more and more teachings so that when he actually got a guru, you know, when he got a guru and was able to really focus on practice, he was a much better teacher. But I don't think that we are of his, like, you know, we are like him. Some people say, "Well, Janggu Khatral studied and practiced everything. Why can't we?" Well, we're not Janggu Khatral. We're a little more confused. A little more confused than Janggu Khatral. So even though he could practice everything, it's not necessarily important for us to practice this. Do you remember what, remember when he gave these little examples of how to make decisions about things? He said, "Training meditation on your guru's instructions is more important than analytical meditation based on texts." Page 41. So he's telling us to really focus on what's important, so teachers will help us do that. Then the final question I have, I have a question that I'd like to ask through audio rather than write. Okay, yeah, go right ahead. Go right ahead and ask your question via audio.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay. So my question is about the, "Keep these two even if your life is at risk."
Yeah.
Now, I know that you said that that's, you know, we're not going to be necessarily doing that. And I want to know, because what came to mind to me was that my life is at risk because I know that my life is impermanent. And so I'm going to die, and that part seems to me to be good death preparation, no?
Right. This, yeah, this is actually sort of, what he's talking about is if somebody was holding a sword over your head saying, "Give up Buddhism." That's what he means. So.
Would it be bad? I mean, honestly, would it be bad for me to aspire now until perhaps, and in some way, prepare myself for a moment like that to not give up? Okay.
Totally good. That's what I was trying to get at.
I know it's a great aspiration, but I'm kind of that way.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was trying to get at with the way I explained that, but it wasn't, it wasn't direct enough. So thank you for making that, you know, making that connection and so we can.
Who knows? Maybe I'll surprise myself.
That's right. That's true. You know, and we can't, we can't put that possibility out of our mind. It's possible that that might actually happen, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah. It's basically, hold on to Dharma, you know?
Could I ask a question about the seven branch prayer?
Yes, you may.
The very end, becoming a seed for the enlightenment of all beings and a splendid leader. I mean, I can't even imagine being that. So it's like, is that just supposed to be very aspirational or?
Yep.
Okay.
That's exactly.
It seems too like you're boasting about yourself or something, you know?
Yeah, but this is, this is what His Eminence Thaisi Therimbache meant when he said, "Tibetans have a saying," and so then he gave us the saying, "When you are making Dharma aspirations, don't worry about practicality. Aim as high as you possibly can." And the average person would not be boastful. You're basically saying, "Even if I'm the last person on earth, may I become a leader for sentient beings?" You know, so it's like, you know, may I on my own? Even if I'm alone, may I be the only one working for the benefit of beings? I'm willing to do that. May I be that person? So it's, it's, all of these aspirations are a mixture. We have, you know, it's the middle path. We have to, you know, we have to aspire as high as we possibly can, recognizing the limitations of our own ego clinging. So yeah, we have to do both. It's like we have to both be in both places at one time. I hope that helps. Did that help?
Yeah, yeah. It just seemed like too much to think of yourself that way. And so, you know, that's why I was asking about it.
No, we gotta do it. We've got to do it because, you know, if not us, who?
Right.
And when it says, "If not you, who?" And if not now, when? You know, so it's, we have to recognize that. I mean, you know, we have to both hold both of those things at the same time. And it's like in the previous question, be willing to be that person, even if we can't be that person now. I just hope that helps.
Yes.
Not telling people to be boastful. I am not encouraging people to be boastful, not at all. But I'm saying, be so strong in your conviction that even if you're the last person in samsara, may you work to benefit beings, you know, the last Buddha in samsara. I hope that helps.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Would you mind, okay, this will be the last one because we're at the bottom of the hour. Would you mind clarifying? I think you said a few minutes ago that all Karma Kaju gurus have achieved enlightenment through practicing Mahamudra. That is correct. But I believe you said earlier, the class, Rinpoche said, "This book is enough." Yeah, that's right. Both of those things are true. Both of those things are true. If you practice only this book, you will achieve enlightenment. And it's impossible to practice Mahamudra unless you first practice this book. So I asked Khenpo Rinpoche one time. I said, "Well, you know, Rinpoche, this meditation on ultimate bodhicitta at the beginning of the book." He said, "Yes." I said, "Well, it sounds a lot like Mahamudra." And he said, "Uh huh." So the ultimate bodhicitta exercises in this book are related practices. So I think that this is why he felt safe, saying that this book is all you need. So both of those things are true, that the, that you have to practice the seven-point mind-training first, not necessarily practice it all the way to Buddhahood first, but that you have to deeply incorporate those motivations in your mind. You have to deeply implant those motivations in your mind in order to properly practice Mahamudra. I hope that's helpful. Because if we don't implant Bodhisattva motivation, then there is still a chance that we might end up doing even the highest practices of Mahamudra for our own benefit alone. And in doing that, we will fail to practice it properly because we'll be doing it for ourselves alone from the wrong motivation. So I don't know if that helps or not, but I hope it does. So we did it. We got to the end of the book. The only pieces I did not cover were the additional instructions from Serelengpa. And I will cover as many of those as I can in the next video, next Wednesday. I don't know what to say except, "Wow, you have been so kind in attending every week and reading the book and taking care to do the practice." And my encouragement is, even if you're going to leave us here and we won't see you again, I'm hoping that you will take to heart the practice that is, that we handed out, this Lojong practice. You know, the daily Lojong practice, this, you know, keep this, now keep this and do some of this. I would love it if you could just keep practicing tong len every day and to do some tong len practice every day. Don't have to do a lot, just a little. And that you will try to continue to practice the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan. Even if you don't have time to do a full practice of Lojong, like on the sheet of paper, if you don't have time to do that, do some shamatha practice and also do some tong len. And then lastly, practice the three objects, three poisons, three seeds of virtue slogan every day, even if all you do is read the formula for transforming negative mental afflictions into the path of awakening. And if you do that, then I think all of the Dharma practice that you do after that will go really, really well. I encourage those of you who have teachers to continue consulting your teachers and keep practicing with your teachers. And those who haven't found teachers yet, that's okay. Just be patient, keep practicing. And as you practice, your karma will bring you into contact with lots of teachers. And then from among those, you'll find your branch teachers. And from among the branch teachers, you'll find your root teachers. And just keep making the aspiration that you're a benefit to everyone you meet. I have a couple people saying, "Thanks." Yeah, so there's a person says, "I don't have a printer, don't have the handouts. If anyone would be willing to print out and mail to me, okay." All right. Yeah. What you can do for that is go ahead and put, do you mind sharing your email in chat? Yeah. Do we have a volunteer to send that? Anybody want to volunteer to send that? Sure. Would you, would you do that? Would you mind sending that, yeah, that PDF, a printed version of that for her? Thank you. I appreciate that. Dedicate your merit. And, okay, very good. Thank you, Christine. So Christine will get that over to you, Mary Ann. Okay. I think, was it Christine who said that she would do it? Yeah, because I, yeah, okay. Thank you. So there you go. All right. So, so I think, I just can't believe that, I can't believe we're done. So we're not done. So I will be back here at 7:00 next Wednesday and the next two Wednesdays. And I will, so if you have questions, you can write them to me at this address. Whoops, let's see if I can put it in here. And Helder, I'm really sorry about that PDF. I got to try to, I tried to get it for you during the class, but I couldn't do two things at once. So I'm going to have to do it in a bit. Okay, my email is lomkathy@columbus, okay, columbusktc.org. And so you can email me if you have questions in between times and I'll make sure that I answer them on the recording for next week. And so I guess it's time to dedicate merit. And in order to dedicate merit, we'll just use the, yeah, oh yeah, thank you. Thank you to my friends in Halapa. Thank you. Thank you for being part of this. Wow, international. I love, thank you. So I'm going to recite the seven branch prayer and you can recite along. I'm going to have to mute everybody though, because if, I will unmute you again at the conclusion and we can say bye. Okay. We're going to dedicate all the merit from all of the six classes and the way Khenpo Rinpoche used to say it, "All the merit you have ever accumulated in the past and will accumulate in the future." We dedicate all of this to the freedom from samsara of all beings. The seven branch prayer. "With complete faith, I bow to all the victorious ones and their sons who abide in the ten directions and three dimes. I offer flowers, incense, light, perfume, food, music, and many other things, both in substance and with my imagination. I ask the noble assemblage to accept them. I confess all evil actions I have done, influenced by the defilements from time without beginning until now, the five that ripen immediately, the ten non-virtuous acts and many others. I rejoice in the merit of whatever virtue, shravakas, prajakabuddhas, bodhisattvas, and ordinary people gathered throughout the three times. I pray for the wheel of Dharma to be turned, the teachings of the Mahayana." the teachings of the mahayana and hanyana in ways suitable for the different aptitudes and motivations present in sentient beings. I ask the Buddhists not to pass into nirvana, but with great compassion and until samsara is completely empty, to look after all sentient beings who drown in this ocean of sorrow. May whatever merit I have accumulated become a seed for the enlightenment of all beings. Without delay, may I become a splendid leader for all sentient beings." Okay, so thank you so much. I'm so happy to have been part of this. And if you're not busy in October, think about, think about a class on the Thirty Seven Actions of a Bodhisattva. It's already started forming. And so you can feel free to unmute. This recording will be up on YouTube tomorrow. And the people, and my friends in Halapa, you've asked for all the chats. I will try to get that up on Dropbox and email everybody the links to that. Look at all the nice people.
Gracias, Abhagati.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lomkathy.
Good night.
Good night.
Lomkathy.
Lomkathy.
It's like, thank you guys. What a great crew. Look at all of you. Wow! New York and...
Thank you, Lomkathy.
Yeah, okay, and Michigan, and I'm sorry. I'm just curious, and, oh, Mount Gilead, hi, Kentucky, hi.
And Woodstock.
Yeah, Woodstock.
Texas.
Columbus, Columbus, all right. Well, folks, thanks again.
It's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next week.
Yeah, see you next time. Okay. Okay, we're gonna say bye-bye now. Om mani padme hum.
Om mani padme hum.
Om mani padme hum.